Yeah, I'm concerned about this smoke in the system there. Is that in any way going to hurt the street cats and little town people?
Not at all.
Does it affect any positions of this house with this smoke here? What kind of smoke? It's not an engineer, how's it going? Do they give a lot of air to this level from shots on the corners?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I passed about the chapter 94 report and pointed out some shortcomings. They didn't have a formal list or anything. Did the board have an opportunity to read their chapter 94 report?
I did read, I didn't get it all read, but I did get, I got it started and...
Okay, about other books. All right, okay. I mean, the pump down, this is my idea, it's not truly a pump down test. And I think the board should be cognizant of that. A typical pump down test is when you take a certain level in the receiver basin and use their cylinder. So if you can calculate the ball, you can, you know, you find how long it takes to pump down, maybe three inches and six inches or whatever, it gives you an indication of the proper point. I think that's a very valuable piece of information to understand the performance of the pumps. And I think it's critical that that be done. I mean, the data was presented in the report is not in that form. And I think we should especially study that. And perhaps if I can be helpful to the board, to get a chapter 94 report. I know each group's done them. I know I did chapter 94 before 12, 14 years ago. But, you know, it gives you insight into what your pumps are doing. So I'd suggest you take a look at that. In the back of the report, as I recall, is a cut sheet from the DEP. This reported the DEP. And in there, there are a couple things. One that comes to mind every month over there, recording the rainfall. And there's a place on that report for rainfall. And, you know, I think that it gives you some insight, if you know the monthly rainfall, if you see surges in the inflow, it gives you an indication, well, maybe we've got some water coming in there. Unfortunately, last year, there were two questions unanswered, whether there was die testing done or whether we did smoke tests. Luckily, this year, we'll have to see if the board is being engaged in doing some smoke tests. So I commend you for that. Uh, maybe next month, I'll have some more questions on the chapter 94 report.
Sir, please read it.
Oh, no, I started.
I think we should discuss the...
That looks like a point of interest. We have some ideas. Our report has... Okay. Oh, that's bad.
There you go.
That's one.
Well, I want to say when they, I'm going to review with these young men that chapter report to go over to see how familiar they are with it also. I think it's a good tool. You're right.
Well, I think it is too. I think there's a purpose DEP wants to come and they give you guidelines in the wastewater solid waste management. I don't remember the chapter, chapter 94, I guess. But casually, which you should be familiar.
Well, sometime in the future, I'd like to get together with these gentlemen and discuss that and make sure that I know what they know and what they're reviewing also.
Yeah.
Monitor. I'm sure they're aware of what they're doing. So why don't I have a question I'd like to make with the board.
Yep. But the document submitted to DEP, I think is principally a product of hollow. So maybe she'd be a good one to discuss it with.
They have written, haven't they? Yeah, they have. Good.
Okay. That's all.
Is that it? Thank you. Take a look at the minutes, if anybody has any questions on the minutes. I'll give you minutes to read it and walk. I didn't see it. In Tom Cackeball, that should be the force pump station, not the force pump station.
Oh.
Like that D on the left.
That was a typo there. Sorry about that.
But it's a real word, it has different collocations.
That's true. That's true. I can change it if that's...
It's easy. Any other questions on the minutes? Make a motion. The motion was the change that we, well, it's not really just a minor change, it's a...
Make a motion except for...
On there. Motion here. Okay, treasures report. That's huge.
Yes, it is. All right. I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay. So, the balance in the general fund checking as of April the 30th was $47,032.88. And then at the account balance in the checking as of May 31st, 2021, was $46,215.63. In our savings account at First Commonwealth, the house of April the 30th, 2021, the balance was $115,673.94. And at the end of May 31st, 2021, the account balance was $118,177.97.
That's good. Okay, take a look at the bills. Is there any other, any questions on these bills? Other than the ones we have?
I have a question on line 34.
Line 34, yes.
Line 7, I'm sorry.
Any electric plant press alarm switch?
Please number 37.
Oh, number 30. Okay.
$2,000.
Pest control.
Who did that? What did they do it for?
Whenever Rich was still on the board, he gave me the, he made the motion that I could do that, go through a table pest control.
Who's this?
Rich.
Oh, he did. Well, we're not familiar with it. That's just not good.
No question.
He didn't make the motion, that's another...
It should have been on board.
So he just approved it outside of the meeting, is what we guys are saying.
I have a question also. What kind of pests were over there?
They just did spraying for bees and that. They just did spraying all the buildings.
For bees.
I'll do it for 500.
You know what works better than the pest control that I use for bees? Can't start and put it works. Very effective. Puts them to sleep right now.
Yeah.
Well, in the future...
It's a lot cheaper than this right here.
Here come the...
You know, if I could interject something here. Remember several years ago, the service guy for the generators were up here? And he recommended bringing like mystase inside the generators because the rodents will get in there sometimes and starting on on the wires and cost you some money. So, I don't know, maybe the guys should buy a few boxes of mystase and stick in there. If they aren't going to need it, they're going to...
Was that mouse trap, do you remember that?
When we have problems, we should be able to take care of ourselves to some extent. If we create it to something big like that, we have to discuss it. That's all.
Well, and that's coming down to number 30 on the bills. I talked to these guys the other day on the discounting's bridgeway. I mean, I don't have an issue if we got a major issue, but I saw the bill for this. I mean, I signed a check for it because it was already downed. But there's absolutely no reason in this world that we can't change your oil in-house. There's no reason in this world that we can't find somebody local. And I'm not, I'm, to use a median example, as an example, I'm not saying that for that reason, but a water pump on a Cummins, I just looked it up. My cost on that water pump's 80 hangovers. And it costs us over, over 200. Probably better than three quarters of this bill was travel time.
What line are you on here?
30.
Line 30.
You know, if, if, if they have to come out and put the computer on the machine, you know, I can understand that. But I also know there's guys around that have Cummins computers that aren't that far away. So, we're, I'm not trying to tie anybody's hands, I just, we're just trying to, that's a lot of money to drive up here from Altoona to change an 80, 90 dollar part and charge you way double over what a part costs. That's just a part. So...
This is a lift pump for the...
This is one of the generators.
Oh, the generators.
Generator, of course.
Yeah, the Ford BT Cummins, you know, big water pump that's.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just wanted to get that, you know, I mean, we had talked about it with these guys, I did anyway, I talked to them, I said, you know, we, I mean, I don't have an issue if it's a major situation where we got to pay them, but to pay them that kind of money to pump here and then, what, six quarts or eight quarts or three gallon oil or five gallon oil or whatever, that, that, you guys are more than capable of changing oil once a year at those generators. I think.
Well, what, what amount did they do for that? 2,000, 300?
I want the bill. The bill's right here.
They put a water pump on it also?
They put a water pump on it. I know that water pump was 200 and something dollars just for the pump.
This is an authorized Cummins deal?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
The oil was...
We'll get, we'll, you got it there for me?
I have it, yeah.
Yeah, let me see.
You want me to read it?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah. What's the number of the company?
It's, it's, it's Cummins Bridgeway. Water pump kit was 202 dollars. Belt was 25 dollars, 1500 watt heating element for the block here. And I don't know, was that bad? Was the block here, okay. Uh, it was 122 dollars. So, the parts were 504 dollars, the travel time was 663 on that one.
Yeah, but you're still after the total number yet.
No, it was more than one generator.
I used the generator.
Well, this was a couple of them.
Oh, yeah, this, they did...
That was just one.
Just one.
The one generator. He only did browsers.
He only did browsers, well, then, I looked at the end and directed.
Sum's not right on that 2300.
No, there's the road miles, yeah. Okay, so shop supplies 9878, road miles 39650, hazardous waste disposal 6174, electronic tool fee 50 dollars, miscellaneous coverage 607, and travel coverage credit 66371.
Let me cut the bottom of my jaw.
2346 dollars and 37.
That's true.
Anyway.
Did that go through the board, this authorization?
No, it didn't, but, and that's where...
That's why we have meetings, getting this figured out.
Yeah, you're not picking on these guys, by no means. I don't know what you think that.
I mean, I just had a generator down and I just...
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a better communication now with the board members.
We're all, I mean, we're all hooked up to email or whatever it is. And all through the week, we're in contact with each other, all through the week.
Within minutes.
Yes. And, and, so, we want to get to the point where you need something, we're not getting blindsided, just, just like what happened, you know, okay, Rich said, yeah, we can do it, well, you know, Richard, Richard there.
Well, that's not their, you know, I mean...
No, I know. And like I said, I don't want, I don't want these guys to feel like they're, they're under the gun here, because they're not.
But just briefly going back to the bees, I don't know if everybody heard because the air conditioner was running, but Corey is highly allergic to bees.
I'm not arguing that.
So, I mean, if he ends up going into anthelactic shock or something, I don't have an EpiPen for him, you know? I don't know. You know? I, I mean, we really, you know, probably should have one, but I'm just saying, like, not that I'm defending or whatever, but kind of look at it, you know, when you've got somebody that's highly allergic to something...
So we can also get prices from other people.
We can, we can. And that's true.
And we should get rid of some other people to do so.
That's true, yes. Absolutely.
Yeah. And like I said, from this time, from, we'll get it set from, you know, from this time, this meeting, that's one of the reasons why you guys were to come. So you understand that it's got to go through the board to be approved before anything, you know? It's not that you guys are out doing any trouble, it's just a, okay, just exactly what you said, Rich said, oh, Rich said, I can do that, well, you know, nobody else knew it? Not another soul.
There's no one board member in charge of this?
No one board member in this board. No. If it has to be a collective, you know, I mean, and that's one of the reasons I stop over these guys, I stop over as much as I possibly can and try to do whatever to make it easier. At least I hope so. If they tell me I'm making it harder, I want them to tell me, hey, you're making it harder.
I just want to say something as a previous nurse. Corey, if you're that allergic, you better get yourself an EpiPen and have somebody realize what they have to do to help you.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I don't...
You have my thoughts.
I have somebody that's 40 years old right now. You know, Kenny.
Yeah, we don't have any questions on the bills in your hand or... Yeah. Can I make a motion to pay these bills?
Make a motion.
On there. Motion here. Got that? All that troublesome stuff out of the way. Force ones. Oh, we got a letter of resignation from Rich Fire, a letter of resignation from Chet Lundey, and an email from Bob, what, which I didn't read? I didn't read.
Well, it was an email to me, but I didn't know if that was to be about the, you know, about the...
About the chapter 94.
Yeah, and about the, that booklet that you sent me. I have it printed off, but I don't know what it's, off the top of my head, I don't know what it's called.
Yeah.
Did you accept the letter to bring it, was it...
Did you accept the letters for, for...
No.
Were there a reason in?
No.
Just, well, I guess Mr. Fire said that he's been busy with work things and he just didn't have the time to put into it. And Chester just said he wasn't really interested in continuing.
Yeah, I think he's only made one meeting to go with it, one for sure, I don't know. Okay.
So there's two openings.
Well, there's two openings, huh?
This is somebody applying.
Okay. Want to take a look at the maintenance report, maybe I have any questions? We'll do our best to answer them. Same with the operator's report.
Maintenance report is a good list for hoists.
Yes. There used to be a hoist over there for these guys that fit in the back of the pickup. It is no longer around. I have no idea where it went. I suggested getting one that they can put into the receiver on the back of the pickup with trailer exposed. Really don't, they're manhandle on these pumps, these pumps are heavy. So, they have the, they have the crane to lift them out of the wet wells or whatever, or the stations are built right in. But to get them from that facility to into the trailer or into the back of the truck, you got to goose them. And I don't want anybody to get hurt, I really don't. So, they're not real expensive, I mean, combined with Harbor Freight, I didn't look, 150, less than 200 bucks, you know? They're lifting, you know, I mean, ones up there, I think they'll lift 1200 pounds, like 1,000 pounds, that's way more than enough. 500 would be enough to lift them up. So, I'd like to get a motion to get, let these guys get one of those cranes.
Lots of don't cost 5,000 dollars.
They're less than 200 bucks.
Harbor Freight's abilities.
You want to get the kind of swivels that...
They swivel, they swivel. They have like a, I'm going to tell you, they have like a plug winch on them, they're manual. I've taken them and taken that off and put an ATV winch on them and they made them 12 volts, you know, other than that. But the ones that they have up there are going to have a four bolt flange that's made the bolt in the bed, I don't recommend that, recommend, and I said, you know, they want to bring it over, I'm not going to charge anybody for it. We'll put a plate on it, four bolts, and, and so they can put it in the receiver, put a pin in it.
I seen you guys install them in the beds before, it cracks and...
And then it runs the bed in the truck. Right, right. So I, if they don't have a receiver mounted, the other one is the same crane, it just had a plate that bolted where the four bolts bolt to the bed with a receiver on it. That's something like, you know, it's a piece of watchtuning, basically.
Make a motion to purchase it if it's under 300.
$1,000 second, a motion under 300.
Yeah, Dr. Stock supply, our team might have that part too, you're looking for.
Yeah.
Somebody's in county grabbing.
Okay. Other than that, uh...
Did you hear an alarm?
Old business.
Did they all agree?
Did they all agree on that?
Yeah.
I didn't hear a second.
Okay, we didn't hear a... She didn't hear a...
I said first and second, I didn't hear an alarm.
Oh.
So you had them. On the favor, third voice, aye.
Aye. Okay, under old business, website.
Back to that, okay. This is what I know. The last meeting, we talked and it said, Bob had suggested, what I wrote, that he suggested in the meeting minutes. And so then, they said, talk to Patrick, so I talked to Patrick. And I talked to him four days after the meeting. He said he'd be willing to show me how to upload the meeting minutes. And then, I don't know that he's now around during the daytime. So, that's where we're at. So Jamie does have the password to it, and she said she would make any changes that I need as far as plane changes, but as far as uploading the meeting...
That's the word on a township, whatever.
Whichever one, well, apparently, Patrick said he uses the same thing that we, that they have.
Okay.
It's all the same. It just, he, he just knew how to make it look better, or whatever. How else to say it? You know, make it look the way everybody wanted it to look. And with uploading the meeting minutes, I just don't know how to do that. If I find out how to do that, then I'd be more willing to do that. But I just, at this time, I'm going to have to have somebody show me how or...
Reach out to Patrick.
Yeah, well, I did, like I said, and he, I don't...
I would suggest you get a hold of, through the cell phone, then whenever you can schedule a meeting with these guys, you can...
He can come over, yeah. Okay. And that's fine, I'll, you know, I'm going to, are we okay to take that off of old business or do we want to leave that on there?
Okay. Okay, let's move on to new business, the smoke testing. The big, the big deal. I looked over these options. My suggestion is option one. I want to see what everybody else thinks about that suggestion.
Keith, after reviewing the system today with the operators, I think option one is more than adequate. I think this project can be done probably in one long day, no more than two days. So I don't think we're really into a week unless something comes up that we're not prepared to. We're getting more violations to document than we think we're going to get.
Okay.
So I do think it, it shouldn't be limited to a two-day activity and possibly as good as one day if we don't need...
Well, I mean, let me ask in this, Tom, if, if we limit it to two days and we get, and you can't get it done, should we give ourselves the extra day?
I think by the notice you already have given them the week.
Yeah, I gave them that.
Weather, weather to worry about too.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying.
So we give them a week to, to do it, but the actual activity, I think, can be done within a two-day period.
Okay.
Now, the implication to public, what is option one and option two?
Okay, that's where we're heading here, public. Well, option one was to have two of, uh, two persons and each provide smoke blower for up to 40 hours of, of the week. So, for the, for this costing is one field crew leader 85 dollars an hour, additional labor is 65. Then, of course, that's what our, our crew would be on here too. So we're talking, originally, what was proposed here was, uh, four consecutive 10-hour days with one hour beginning and ending at the, beginning and ending of each day, reserved for startup and shutdown activities. We would propose begin smoke activities by 9:00 AM and end by 5:00. So Tom's now saying that's option one.
Who's responsible for keeping records?
Who's responsible for...
Keeping records. Who's going to document violations or things that need filing?
Well, here, and we're going to discuss it on the options when we do this. Let me read the second one and then we're going to get to what we're going to decide. It, we're, I want, I would like to have not only the handwritten notes, address, physical address, we want pictures, so...
The smoke coming out of that.
Yeah, we, we definitely want documentation so we don't have to go back and, somebody says, oh my God, that didn't happen in my house. We need to have documentation. So, either, either option. These guys are going to have to have a camera with them, you know, I don't know, of course, it's not on their option to supply a camera, but we'll have to make sure that...
I have a camera, if you guys are willing to, like, I could buy a SIM card, if you guys are willing to reimburse me for a SIM card, I could just use that for the sewer part of it.
You know, I don't, we have a camera. We used to have a camera here, didn't we?
It's Polaroid.
Yeah.
Sure, he does.
I thought they asked you for a camera. But we got, listen, I don't have any issue with that. At all.
I can just put that on my camera and then...
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
And then I can upload it to the computer, like, put it in the files, everything.
That'll work.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion. Send it.
I'll second.
On the favor.
Aye, aye.
A real quick question, I don't know if your board already did that. Did you notify the 911 service that you were doing this?
They got to have to deliver a paper.
They were handling it, right?
The name delivered.
Yes. There've been notices placed at all three post offices. We talked to the fire department, Penny had reached out to the 911. There's a notice at the pharmacy, I took today. All of the people in Weedville got a notice on the back of their bill. You know, it was only going to be in...
That's fine, I just...
Oh, I do, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows. So there was a notice like this on the back of the bill, this is a sample that shows, and we highlighted it so that they would see that it was going to happen. And I had handed out these public notices to anybody that is, we've had a change of ownership recently that had bought a property in Weedville, I stuck that in as a change of notice. Change of address or change of... You're welcome.
Anyway, option two would be our two guys doing this with, hopefully, the hope of maybe two additional local... two additional local people, maybe the road crew or something, but nothing else in stone. So that's the second option, everything would be the same. The cost was, how I looked at it, would probably be twice as long, which would cost us exactly the same amount of money as option one. Any other questions on the smoke test? Can I have a motion for what option?
I made a motion, go with option one. I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye, option one. And you can go, you can just go get the SIM card, I'm somewhere.
Yeah, we already named options.
Yeah, I mean, you know, make sure you understand enough. You may, you may not find a, nothing, but I think you're going to be busy. I think you're going to have all kinds of covers.
What color smoke do they use?
It's explained in the brochure, right, do it, hang down. Go ahead.
Gray, gray smoking, non-colored smoke.
No, it's not really smoke either.
Okay, the smoke test is taken care of.
Did you see one of these, Joe? You haven't seen that, okay, let me just hand that to you so you can read that.
Tarn chip in the front of the entrance of the sewer plant. Question is, last year we did it in front of the plant, worked on the whole thing around the side, and in front of the building. It was over yesterday? It's David Fork?
David Fork.
David Fork. It was only marked, like, ten feet out from the garage. We need, what do you want to do, do the whole thing that we did last year, or do you want to? Ten feet past, I don't know.
I think that back parking lot, that could actually wait till next year or the year after.
How about the road beside it, though?
The road beside it, back, back there.
How about we do this compromise, let's have them back, straight back the road alongside that, and come out right past the garage, and then they can move over and do it in front of the garage, and get that area tightened up in there, you know, and like you said, your board walk up forward and get the cardboard put up against the building, so you don't get some cars flatter.
Sounds good.
Okay?
What's it cost?
What's the cost?
You know, I don't remember what the gallon cost since Danny from the township, but I mean, it's, it's not anywhere near what it was. I did know, I did know, and I'm talking, I think it went up about eight cents, a gallon from last year.
So what did it cost last year to do that, any idea?
I wasn't here last year.
It wasn't a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money, do what you need to do.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money.
What's not a lot, can we have an idea of the number?
Do have to go in there.
I don't think it was six hundred dollars.
Oh, that's a lot of money.
That's the, you know-
Depends on who you're talking to, right?
It does save, it really does save money.
Yeah, I agree. I'll make a motion to do what he needs to get done.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. So there you go, Corey, just back them and catch the end of their parking lot, cut straight out, move over, catch in front of the building.
And do the flat road.
And then just do the flat road out, but I'd catch in front of that. You know, I mean, I, okay, let's take care of that. Okay, wet wet grouse farm, curtain grouting.
That's this? Does anybody need to look at, I only made one of these, but if anybody needs to look at that again? No? Anybody?
Oh, since the last meeting, I took the liberty of send out electronic invites to, I think, four additional contractors. I don't know if anybody got back to court or not, but I did have one come back to me with a declining, you know, a declining option, that they were not interested in doing it. So the only quote that I'm aware of that you've received is from USG. Commino construction was requested, Wagner construction was requested, Tom, I'm pretty sure there was at least three additional ones on top of USG. Now, do they need more time, Tom, or do they just-
I said the deadline is today. If they didn't contact you by today, then-
Okay, so there wasn't a deadline set?
There wasn't a deadline set in the email. So I had them, if they were interested to contact Corey, but if they didn't contact them, I guess none of them are, well, they're in decline, well, they're in decline.
This is only on one location, whether it is-
This is only on one.
One location.
The situation with the force pump station is not, not an activity where you want to pressure drought that, because it is a pipe drain. If you would put the expandable material in that, you'd be sealing off the drain. So that's not an application for this particular, uh-
Well, we still have to address that situation. So I guess I'm going to lean on you a bit, Tom, have you worked with this company?
Yes, I have.
Outstanding.
What type of material are they going to use on this grout, uh, flat steel or something?
No, 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 it's a, it's a pole door thing. It's in there to put it on, it goes, the hydrophobic urethane route.
It's a- Little, little water.
Yeah, yeah. It expands when it's, when it receives water, along with Parsons water pump. See, what they'll drill, what they'll do is they'll drill through the concrete from inside the wet well, because it's fourteen feet deep, rather than excavating it, they will go down, have a guy in the wet well with ladders and safety harnesses and whatnot, they will drill where the water is coming through, and then they'll apply that through the concrete to the outside.
To the hole.
To the hole. Now, the fifteen, they have fifteen hours projected in here, because typically what happens is they'll seal it here, then they'll move over to here. So it's like putting your finger in the deck.
Well, I was thinking, while they have the man inside, or air apparatus and so forth on, because of the fumes, have them go ahead and pressure wash the walls down and coat the entire-
No, no, that's part, yeah, that's, that's-
Because there's a scum buildup and needs to go off, so you can adhere with the new product you're putting on.
It's not, it's not applied from the in, it's not applied to the inside. You have access through the inside, but you're applying the product on the outside. I don't know if Joe has a copy of that.
There?
Yeah, he has it there.
Yeah, they go even the wet well, drill through your wall, and pressure drought using a combination, um-
It looks like great stuff, that stuff you use on your house for double crack.
More of a, more industrial than that, but that is a good concept, yeah.
I've used that before, it works pretty good, not on that application, though.
So, Tom, they bring everything that we need, other than, I assume they're going to need water, which we have, and-
Yeah.
Is there anything else that we have that you don't see specified in this?
No, I don't think there's anything we need to, just an operator that provides access to the site, give them access, coordinate the, their schedule.
And, uh- We spoke about the Aston Woods and the cost.
We have a cost.
We have a cost here, yeah.
I, no, he does not own it.
Five thousand dollars for the, the labor, at fifteen hours, three hundred thirty-five dollars for throughout, per crew hour, twenty dollars per gallon for the material, and then five dollars per bill for the quick plug. So again, they'll bill you on units of urethane that they use.
Yeah, so if they don't use all of that-
If they don't use twenty, you only get billed for ten. If you get twenty-five, you're going to get billed a hundred and five dollars per gallon.
Whenever inside this holding containment, wouldn't it be a good idea after they press wash, to scan the walls of the containment area and see if there's any more cracks or defects of some type? That's why we're getting this infiltration. That'd be a good idea.
Well, I think you're, I think they're going to find out with the fifteen-hour time, that they're going to find if there's going to be any more leaks after they, they pressure drought this area, and it moves it over to this area, that if, are we going to have another issue, or, or, yeah, I can see it going around the basin, but, and again, I don't know many cracks here, but we do know that we're getting some leaks.
As of now, it's just leaking around the seams, like where the mast at this.
Right.
Just leaking around there.
So-
Fourteen foot high, could be a lot of seams.
There's a lot of seams.
There's a lot of seams, yeah. Okay, well, we need to stop this infiltration, we're going to start somewhere.
Yep.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, ask them to purchase, have USG do it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
That could be a big savings after you get all the infiltration and stuff cleared up.
Yeah, I, yes.
Your hours went way down.
Sometimes you need the water, but if you read the brochures on that, you're going to supposedly save a significant amount of money. I think our problem is control this infiltration right now, and show them that we're making our best effort as far as our government.
I absolutely agree.
I think we're making a lot of headway with the projects we're working on now.
I mean, you know, how are you going to assess the results? I think you should give some thought to that. I think the board should be given the floor right now to report to the board what has happened at Calavina since the terror stop.
I agree, I was just going to say that.
Wait a minute, I was going to-
Yeah, so the beginning of, it was like April, March, April, our pumps down there at the Calavina pipe pump station, they were running for like fifteen to eighteen hours in a week. So we did that excavation down there, put the drop main setup on the inside of the manual versus the outside, and then we put the plug at the bottom, that way it keeps all the water from going in on the infiltration. Now we cut it back to, it's like running point nine in a week.
A week.
A week.
Yeah, that's a major amount of infiltration solved, and that's, you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time in COVID, and we need to get this infiltration issue addressed. And that's the biggest reason for the smoke testing, starting on the oldest part of the system, which is Weedville, and-
Now, this was in a manhole, it wasn't in the vault.
It was in the manhole.
It was in the manhole.
So you're going to have infiltration contributing to force from manholes, and you're going to have, no doubt, as you've identified, you're going to have infiltration-
Right.
-occurring in the vault itself.
Right, right.
So is there a good way to assess what's coming from manholes and what's coming from vaults? I mean, once you conk it, you can assume it's been eliminated in the vault, so now you're going to attribute it all to the manholes?
Well, these guys are, we're going to start a regiment, and it's starting with this smoke testing, they're going to start a regiment wearing their, we're going to go through the whole system. And I'm actually going to go out and see if we can get some grant money for, uh, Forest in Burndale, because they do qualify under CDDG funding. So that's where I'm heading shortly here. But we'll get Weedville documented, and let's get the problem solved in Weedville, and we're going to move on to the second phase of the whole sewer system, and we're going to address that phase, and then, of course, the next phase after that. So I, I've got a sneaking suspicion, we're going to have quite a bit of smoke in Weedville. And Tom knows this, he's said it many times, frost pulls the, the viewports up, it's just inevitable, sometimes it's just a matter of going around and putting the viewports back into the gasket and solving the problem, sometimes it's more than that. But we need to address all issues and, and fix. And I think we're, we'll see a major decline in cost of not having to treat, uh, or say rainwater.
It sounds like these guys will probably have some discussion on whose fault it is, it's the sewer company fault, it's the landlord's fault, whose fault?
Well, it's, well, pretty much it's going to come down to this, Joe, the tap, from the tap to the house is over, it's the same as the water.
Mother of nature is responsible, mother of nature.
Yeah, mother of nature.
Maybe we have to have a timeframe laid out too, for this to be done.
Well, we, once we find everything, once we have that information, then we're going to address that, so, that's my opinion, how's that, I shouldn't, I'm talking out of here. But once we have all the information, who's, where, what, we got a map, then notices can be sent out, you have whatever it is, thirty days, or to fix your problem with this.
We may need to look at the way that the residential sewer lines are put in, because I know Brockway doesn't use the gasket on the up pipes anymore, they glue.
Right.
Because of that issue.
Well, and I said this a long time ago, when Weedville was put in, Weedville was put in with a check valve, not that trap system that's drove me crazy when I, I didn't care for them. And we had very little issues with the, the check valve, I should say, I mean, ran into the trap. So I'm kind of curious, I, I don't, I don't know, we'll find out. I'm going to tell you, probably ninety-five or ninety-eight percent of Weedville was put in with a check valve.
Most of them had nothing, they just did, line up the houses straight through them.
Well, most of them got a check valve, did I, once I put in, Paul Leonard put in, got a check valve.
Now, the one down back, it's got a UWE in it, but my front one goes straight through.
Well, that was an option given to the homeowner, and I think at that time, those check valves were about seventy dollars. I'm pretty sure everybody that was even near the curtain, the bottom ends, put them in, there was, there was a lot of them put in because I-
Well, you would get sewer gas coming back through if you did put them in.
No, there's a vent, there's a vent, and of course, you've got a trap inside the house instead of outside the house.
Some people with straight grain pipes going out in the trap. There you get smoked.
I have a question about the motion number three, the wet well, you were talking about curtain grouting, everybody said to move forward, but do we have a timeframe of when we want to do this? Because we're doing the smoke testing in June, or do you want to move with July, or you want to skip a month, have wait and resolve the smoke issues, and then once we feel like we have-
What you should do is execute the proposal that's been offered by USG, send it back to them, and let them come back with their schedule.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and we can, if we can say, okay, we can meet your schedule, or you're going to have to meet our schedule. Okay. Number four, 168 Pine Avenue and 30 Link.
Yeah.
168 Pine is, which?
Well, there is, um, there are two properties that currently, one has a lien, and I need to have a motion on whether or not I'm permitted to contact them to update it with the additional fees that have- to update it with the additional fees that have been added. And then, the second one, I don't believe has a lien, at least not that I've been able to find. And so, I wanted to know if I was able to move forward with placing a lien on that property. That property is, that one is the 30 Maple. 30 Maple, from what I know, does not currently have a lien and the balance due is $3,922.
Is somebody living in it?
Yes, someone is living in it. The water is shut off.
So, they're carrying their water and dumping it down the pipe?
Probably. So, I didn't know, there is the option to plug it. You know, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to do that.
Yeah, you plug it under.
And then, the other one...
Listen, I don't want anybody to think that I'm cruel, but you're never going to stop it if you don't plug it. You're just never going to stop them. Because it's too easy for them to just carry buckets of water and flush it down and we got to treat it. So, we're treating it for nothing. So...
The other property, the lien currently, oh, I don't know what the lien currently is, but the updated amount is due is $18,867.44.
$18,000.
$18,000.
I would say they're behind a couple of years in order to...
Well, what is happening is the penalties are about $800 a month is now what's happening because it's a 5% penalty. So, I...
Motion to block.
Those are the two. I believe, yes. Both of them have the water shut off. I did check with the water company. Both of them are shut off. I'm not sure how they're functioning. I don't know. I mean, I chose not to put the names on the...
I make a motion to put updated liens on both houses.
Okay.
And also plug them.
Right, we're going to keep the liens on and then plug them now.
Okay, so we do want to do both. We want to update the liens and then we also want to plug them. Does that sound...
Is there a second date?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a time for the plugging? Because that's going to create probably a, probably should happen on a Monday because I'll be here till Thursday and if somebody's going to be coming in.
And there's not going to be any after hours or whatever. If you want.
Oh, we need to allow the $18,000. Course, reason.
I get them all. I don't, that I don't know.
I think we need to make an amount when we start putting liens on. And what's the lien cost?
Well, Jamie had told me, I've never put a lien on a property. So, Jamie had just informed me it wasn't that much. So, there again...
They should pay them all.
You know.
I'm sorry, sir.
But you knew all the...
Well, I wonder where the website was.
Yeah. I was on the, yeah, I was on the, you know, the deed website today to do some research, but...
$1,500 or $2,000 position begins.
You want to let go of that for $1,500?
$1,500.
$1,000.
Make a motion on it.
You make, you tell me what to do.
I make a motion for a lien on house $1,000 and plug it.
Okay.
So, okay, I hear that. No, it is there. All in favor? Andy made a motion for $1,000 and plug it.
$1,000. All in favor? Plug it.
And put the lien on now.
And put the lien on now. It's got, that's crazy. Almost $19,000. You know, in a month, it's going to be $19,000.
Well, we were awesome $1,000 too because we didn't have liens.
Yeah.
And that's what happens is that it...
I wasn't aware of that.
Well, they kind of sneak through, you know, it's like when they're sitting and you see them and people say, "Well, I'm going to make a payment," and so you assume. And then they come in, they do make a payment. We had, we did have three that we shut the water off last month, April. That's not last month, April. And we shut three off. And, you know, everybody gets a little excited when they turn on their stricken. They don't have water. But it was, you know, relatively effective. I mean, some people make some promises that they don't keep. But if I have, yeah, if I have a given amount, I can go through my penalty report at the end of the month and tell the guys which ones.
I think we need more information on the cost of things to be able to determine what your amount, which one do we put the lien on.
Okay.
If there's something like $1,000 or $1,500, they're going to pay, you plug it, and you pay some of it.